Yep, it's good. Alright, call this meeting.
I close my digits to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first agenda item is approval of September's, uh, November meeting minutes.
I make a motion to approve the November meeting minutes.
Does anybody have a chance to review them? Any questions or comments? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Department reports and projects. Water, any waste water department?
Uh, water. Uh, number thing was, uh, there was a chlorine leak. Coming from the tank to the pump of wall three. Jenny didn't find that correct. And she just switched it from wall three to wall two. Which is a different pump and hence the leak stopped. It's not actually repaired yet. So, before they use wall three again, I'll have to make that repair. On the waste water side, um, they're using the same clarifier that they've been using all summer. Cause they couldn't get a valve open to switch clarifiers. And then they put heaters in the existing clarifier. And, uh, they tried to get it open with, had somebody come out with some kind of a crane or something and it still worked open. Just a lift valve. So, uh, probably won't do anything with it until spring. And, uh, just continue running where we are for the rest of winter. Still waiting for the packing to show up for the pump.
It just shut up today.
Oh, it did?
It did.
Okay. Anyway, uh, I'll see if I can get that fixed. I think that's pretty much it. On the street department side, um, I think the guys have been doing a re- pretty good job of keeping the rooms clear. Um, we did get more salt. So, should we get ice or snow, whatever, uh, we should be pretty protected. Equipment's all running pretty well. No, no real issues here.
Okay. Uh, fiscal department? Do you guys have anything you want to mention? No. Um, did you know about a couple of new computers? And some vests? Cause I asked you about expenses that might be coming up. And, um, so Jenny has the quotes for the computers? You know, about how much was that?
They were... Jake sent me an email. It's been a minute.
Yeah, hold on.
Yeah.
I'm gonna go circle.
Did, uh, we just need, whatever we can get minimum to run still. We don't need anything fancy, no touchscreens, nothing like that. Just enough limestone to ignore our, uh, take it.
Yeah, and we need two. Cause there's two vehicles. Does yours have one? Or is it, was yours one of them?
No, I took mine out and gave it to the reserves, uh, so I do not have one on the computer. But I had one, um, and it, it had broken.
Okay.
Um, do you know anyone? I used to have a company that used to clear out the computers and, uh, do we have a com- uh, company like that anymore that could revamp one? Cause I have an older one from sixteen. Was the last time we purchased a computer was two thousand sixteen. I don't know if it's still capable of working if I were to clean down.
I think we can just get new ones.
Yeah. It's probably, yeah, it's two thousand sixteen, but getting a new one.
Okay, that was the last time we, we have ever purchased a computer, so.
Okay. Uh, I remember your coming over to my house.
Yep.
You look at it, I just built it, and that's the right time.
Right.
Yeah, that was it. Okay.
I think all the quotes were, um, were stuff that's easily attainable through Best Buy.
Okay, so we can buy them off. It's not like this is a specialized, super expensive.
No, so if you guys want, I want to say, and, and I apologize, I, I could have had that brought up, but, um...
Was it an email? Yeah, I'm just trying to find his emails. I can forward it.
Yeah.
I have it, I'm just trying to forward it.
It's like, it was-
Your email open?
Yeah.
Is it the?
Green Arrow.
D R H dot net? Okay. You should have it now.
What do you have for the prices?
Um-
Just round about?
Anywhere from seven to nine fifty.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That's cheap.
And the vests were, cause I was wondering-
The vests are about the same price. Six to nine, somewhere in there, but probably about nine.
So, we're, we're good to go and-
Yeah, if you guys, if, if that's okay, I can just get that taken care of.
When did the vest expire?
January first.
Oh.
They're not gonna just fall apart.
Well, yeah, they won't fall apart, but-
For their, yes, we've had, it'll be five years old on January first.
Yes, okay.
So, what do you do with the old ones?
We don't know. If you have any ideas what to do with the old ones, I-
I know there was a-
There was a, a, a while back, this is fifteen years ago, there was a refurbishing program. And that kind of went away, so they kind of just- Yeah, it doesn't work. So, so I have a pile of old vests in my office that if you guys can figure out what we, I don't know.
I don't know what you would do with them.
I don't know. Make them like a fear of cat vest. I can talk to other departments, see what they do with them. If they just have a nice stack file, maybe don't need to go to the oil.
Um, so, okay. Unless there's an objection, we'll, we'll go ahead and give those purchased.
Okay.
Alright, um, fire departments. We have a report coming down. They highlighted some maintenance issues at the fire station that exit sign lights need to be replaced. Office ceiling panels. And a leak in the furnace room. Did you hear that? Is that something we, I remember you talking about that before.
The leak?
Yeah.
Where we're gonna have, um, call some bores?
Oh, no, no, that's the drainage bay.
Oh, okay.
I can object with them and figure out, um, those things. And then I think they've got a payment checklist ready for us to go through. And, uh, I talked with, had a couple of good conversations with Rodney. Actually, me and one, and some emails. Um, the E M R training, they didn't have enough people. And I mentioned this by email, they don't, we decided it wasn't best to have people that were just medical and not firefighting. Um, cause that hasn't worked out well for other departments. And I think that answering medical calls gives the firefighters something to do, you know, to be able to answer calls, you know, wanna split that up. Um, so he's thinking maybe of, kind of figuring out how to balance, like, if he can publish it on the C A T S and maybe other people will want to come and get training and so we can host it. But only pay for our people. He was all for the idea of who's paying for, you know, members and, you know, relational members and kind of stuff, people who's interested. And not like padding numbers or anything. Um, however, we do have, with West Creek Township was interested in working with us. So, this is something I mentioned with him. The idea of, um, if we are with West Creek Township where they're like, we'll contract with you if you have E M R. I don't know if they're there, but if they were at that point, it would sort of be worth it for us to pay for the make, to make the E M R training happen, even if we didn't meet the minimum of ten, even if there was a few F T Cs that kind of the money was just getting burned in a way. But if that lets you get a contract, then it's much more than that, that would be a worthwhile investment. So, that's just an idea, you know, we'd rather find people to fill the spots, but I just wanted to kind of look at that.
What was it, ten?
It's, you need ten people and five hundred dollars. Maybe it was four hundred dollars per person, it's one of those. For the trainer to-
I think it was five hundred.
I think, yeah, okay.
And we were gonna pay, um, yeah.
And so, it was, the trainer needs a minimum of five thousand dollars to make it worth their time to come and do all of that. So, I want the department to chip in something up because they're gonna get the West Creek Township payment if they do, so. Maybe we could chip in some, I don't know, but just put the idea in there.
Okay, it's not gonna be worthwhile especially. From there to guarantee-
Right.
That West Creek would contract.
Right.
Without that, I think, probably not.
Okay.
Depending on how many, maybe if you have only four or five, then you're paying a thousand dollar per person.
Hmm.
Kind of-
Yeah.
Skip through, but-
So, the, as a tiebreaker, we make all that happen pretty soon. Because budgets get better and that's probably when West Creek is gonna decide who they contract with for twenty twenty seven. So, and then the training takes several months, so it really has got to be organized in the next few months. So, I'm hoping they're gonna stay on that and, you know.
Think about what departments in the area. How many, do we have? Four? Five?
We've got four or five, yeah, but some of them are recap. And like Rodney wouldn't need to take it because he's getting E M T certified right now. Kenny already has it. Keegan and Bob Nicker wouldn't need to take it. Forget. Yeah, maybe, yeah, I think it was in that, it was all in, you know.
I'm a little bit incoming.
Yeah. I'm hoping to meet with West Creek or see how we start. Um, any else on the fire department? Alright, court treasurer. I need a motion to approve the doctor's. Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Aye. Alright, motion carries. Uh, building department? Building manager, anything?
No, we had a leak, but I think it was just all that's normal and ice rolled up over that gutter. And it formed down on top of the, I think it's the air conditioner out there. And found its way in. Cause where that gutter is clear, it doesn't, it couldn't do it after it started to get better. And it didn't happen on the south side.
Okay.
Something to watch again, but I don't, I don't really, it's a bunch of new ones.
Building commissioner, we've got a report, warrant, permit, no contractor's license. Um, Tim and Steven Bell Broom and I met together on Friday morning to map out a plan to them getting an occupancy permit um, by the time they need, which is by the end of April of May first. And, um, their plans are currently sent, have been sent to Indianapolis by their architect to get the construction design, so that's the last major hurdle. But Tim doesn't expect that to be a big problem. Um, we are gonna need a fire inspector to do the fire inspection. Um, and Tim isn't currently our fire inspector. He, he's certified as a fire inspector.
I think Rodney is.
Rodney's also certified, so we need to figure out who will do that. Technically, it came up, we're supposed to have a fire inspector inspecting our commercial buildings once a year in town. I think that's our responsibility, so.
I believe it is, I know what to do with there, so.
So, I don't know if we hire Rodney or contract with LoL. Tim was gonna look into it and get back to me, so.
Didn't Rodney have like a conflict of interest to talk?
Yeah, I think he was less interested in doing it.
Yeah, because of-
Because of, um-
The town, I think.
Right.
I don't know if he's saying anything.
Because of what?
Because he lives in town, didn't want to make anybody mad by saying you need to have this and that.
It's not a conflict of interest, it's a-
Well, yeah.
Not wanting to make waves.
Right. Well, I mean, you could ask him again.
Yeah.
It's been over a year, so maybe you-
So, right now, there's nothing for us to do, just we want to wait to hear back from Tim. Um, and then he also and I met about the meeting, you know, funding issues. He's gonna work on, uh, certified letters we need to send to the people. He's gonna have that, um, ready for me to look at by the end of next week. Um, so that's been handed off, and everything's resolved with the D N R except for the last three. And they're happy with, uh, D N R's happy with the grain elevator now.
Oh, okay, good.
And the brooms are really happy to do that. And with their, they do have a variance. They're good, they're having an electrician that will do that work lined up and the parts are ordered, so they're, you know, trying to get everything done as fast as possible.
What was that, what was that, what?
Oh, uh, the variance for the, uh, bathroom sprinklers require seasonal, um, fire alerting.
Oh, okay.
Uh, some like more sensitive smoke detectors and anunciator and something that will automatically cut off any music. I think like a switched power outlet that you have to plug your DJ stuff into. Um, so they have an electrician that's gonna do all that and they've ordered the parts.
Oh, okay.
Alright, this, so if you don't have a recycle report? So, board report, salary based district.
Uh, we did have a meeting, um, what was it, first? Uh, it was a very short meeting. As far as what we went over, uh, they have to, they approved a six thousand dollar expense to update their software for their computers. And the only other thing on the agenda was really a salary ordinance for a two and a half increase for the staff. And next meeting is January fifteenth. Pretty short meeting, it's only about ten minutes long.
Uh, Northwest Indiana Regional Planning Commissioner?
Uh, we had our meeting last Thursday and they just secured, um, their executive board and, uh, salary ordinance, just closing out the year.
Um, Shreve Creek Ambulance, we had a board meeting on December ninth. Did talk about a whole lot of, I think, very, some policies and some personnel. Somebody was asking for an exception to something and a romance in the workplace policy. But it's all going well. And then, online security?
There wasn't.
Okay. Any zoning meetings?
No.
Do you have any old business? Looks like no. Any new business? So, first one is street department, science department. Are these the old bits?
Mm-hmm.
Were you all received in the fire?
Yes.
More of the stack we did last time.
It's split opening up. It's split. Oh. It's down with the same paper.
I think it's just one of them.
The second desk.
Most of it, yeah.
You're a very helpful court treasurer.
Thank you.
Oh, wow, that looks like the high one. No? Is that seven or two? That's why I like putting the slashes, yeah.
I think you gotta say what all of them are, though.
Okay. Next, Daniel Hoover for thirteen hundred dollars. Scott Gallagher for fifteen hundred. Wayne Freyer for one thousand three hundred seventy-six. Tom Legacy? Legacy? For seventeen hundred, although, yeah, did you call, what, you call it seven or?
I, that would be a seven.
Yeah, okay, so seventeen hundred. Mylan Bozovich for one thousand five hundred and fifty. And then you?
Kendall Zepplin.
Oh. And then Kenneth Leo for one thousand two hundred and thirty-four. Oh, one, two, three, four, that's great. Um, so the high bid would be Tom Legacy for seventeen hundred dollars. So, we're gonna work with him. We don't need a motion for this, right? Any objection to doing that?
No.
The contracts for twenty twenty-six. So, we have a contract in the state of the fire department. Um, keeps everything the same except puts the dates forward, changes the equipment because they sold one thing and bought another. And then they added a deadline for the town that we have ten business days to respond to their request for payment and verify everything, otherwise it just gets paid without verification. Um, so we need a motion to accept that contract.
I'll make that motion.
Any questions or discussion? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next contract is M C O. Remember what the increase on this was, Jenny?
Five.
Five percent?
Mm-hmm.
Is everything else the same?
Mm-hmm.
So, we need a motion for that contract.
I'll make a motion to accept that contract.
So, any question or discussion? We talked about this in the work session.
Mm-hmm. Am I happy with it? Not terribly, but.
Yeah, I was just kind of wondering if we knew what their percent was last year.
It was like three and a half, I think.
And that was, they originally asked for more and you, you worked them down.
Mm-hmm.
Would you-
I'm rough.
Would you push back this year too and-
No.
The hell or?
I didn't, I didn't, um, only because they've... There were a lot of times to where they had to come out, like on the weekends or extra. And even though they can, they can charge us for that, anything, but they never deal.
Okay.
So, kind of picked my battles on that.
Smart, yeah.
I'm curious that, uh, I had mentioned, when we were talking about the, uh, public works that they came out, was that crane to try to open that valve? Did you receive any kind of an invoice for that?
I haven't yet. If, if we get something-
More than one, so.
Right. I don't know who the company was.
I don't either.
Yes, I don't know, but.
Oh, another thing that I, I forgot to mention, they, uh, I think it was, uh, on the weekend, I mean, they, they have an alarm there for, it's called a razz. So, it's, uh, there's a pump that pumps it from the bottom of the clarifier into the building and then back into the oxidation ditch. It's just a continuous circle. If that, it's called a teller tube, if that gets clogged up, then those pumps lose their prime and there's some water that goes off. And if that continues for very long, it creates a lot of problems. Anyway, they did have a, uh, some rags that clogged it up. And, uh, he tried just using a garden hose to clear it, which, uh, never worked. But, uh, uh, he talked to me about what I used to do for it. And I used to keep a pump in the clarifier, just hanging by a chain, a two inch submersible pump. And I would pump it from the top of the clarifier into that tube and just blow up a clog back out. Now, he was going, I don't know if he picked it up, but he was gonna pick up a pump to do that. Since he didn't have one, he had to call out a jetter truck. That may be another charge that we get. And again, I'm sure he probably hadn't received a bill for that, cause that was just the other day. So, um, it's a lot cheaper to just run that pump in there if we have one. He said that ours apparently doesn't work, so. We're gonna pick one up. I don't know if he did, cause I haven't talked to him since then. They did get it working and everything is back to normal, so, just FYI.
If it happens again before we get the pump, I don't know, I'm gonna, two inch gas and trash wire pump.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it's actually, keep that pump, keep it in there, it's just a matter of-
Yeah. Yeah.
It's like waiting a couple of minutes.
Really smart.
And it's cheap, so, anyway, look at that.
So, the motion on the floor is, uh, accepting the M C O contracts. Any more discussion? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. So, the next contract we had is building custody meetings. Is this, you said this was all the same, Jenny?
Yes, no change.
Okay.
So, you don't make a motion to, uh, accept it?
Any discussion, questions?
No.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. So, we have the last contract is the lease for both public libraries. We talked about this in the work session at, um, if we want to increase the rate by five dollars or not, so we have two versions here. So, what was the, these two rates? Four hundred and sixty dollars a month or four hundred and sixty-five? Talked about they're kind of a public good for the residents of the town, maybe a reason not to increase it. Reason to increase it of everything goes up, our cost goes up, till it leaves, why not? We don't want to increase it eventually, unless it will become zero. Good arguments on both sides. You're-
I don't know.
You can't vote. Jenny's the tiebreaker. I can't make any motions.
I'll make a motion if there is no increase.
Okay. Alright, any questions or discussion? So, to accept the contract, sign on the contract without any raise. Go ahead, yeah. Any questions, discussion? Since you can vote, you want to say anything?
I, I'm second.
Okay, alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, motion carries.
Finish. Anything just to ask about?
Okay.
Can we have that right here?
Cool. Alright, I think that's our last contract.
So, David, if I had you, I didn't need to actually break that tie. Were you agreeing to not do it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, good point. We should have first voted and then asked you. I can go off.
Yeah, it's fine.
Um, so the last issue is town council president for twenty twenty-six. Um, so this is where actually voting, okay, that's right.
You can, if you, if you want to vote, or I think you can just accept the nomination. There was nobody else, so.
But I think we should still have a motion and like, I'm willing to do it. I'm the only one that was nominated. Anybody else had a change of heart or would like to do it?
Why not?
Yeah, I'm shocked.
I'll make a motion, David would be the next president again.
I'm the second, if I may.
Any discussion, questions? Alright, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, open for, Bob.
I'll come up here and do this so they can hear me, if anyone's even watching. So, uh, Jake and I, telling the, all the comments for the- So, uh, Jake and I, telling the, all the comments for the Christmas tree.
Christmas light?
Christmas light, I'm sorry, the Christmas light contest here in town, and it came down to our two top people, or the Lynch family and the Lelos, uh, both with forty-nine votes. And, uh, so, the only fair way to do this, in my opinion, is to come flip a coin, so I want you guys to just make sure it's not double-titled there. Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and say, since it's up here, Lynch will be heads, Lilo will be tails, and we'll go first and second that, okay? It is, it's heads, so congratulations Lynch family on winning first, Lelos will be second, and then the Adams family had one vote, and they will be the third place winners. I'll be around here in a minute to give off the awards. Right? Thank you.
Thank you.
You have somebody who wants, what are the awards?
They're gift cards. They are gift cards. Monitor Valley gift cards, I went ahead and did the Visa gift cards to allow them to go where they want.
Let's see.
Uh, that was, I'll be around shortly.
Anything else that we're open for?
Oh, I can bring this in, um, as you guys know, we just have a water leak, actually the homeowner had a water leak in their house. I don't recall her name, it was over on I-2, yeah, I-2, and, uh, tried to shut the valve off, but the valve doesn't work. And, and we tried to shut the valve off, this was the line that's under the ground. That's what's left there. I'm only showing you this because I'm sure it's not the only one that's like this.
Right.
So, oftentimes what ends up happening is when you try to get out some of these valves, if you have to put any torque on them, you can break something under the ground, and we got, and this one had to be repaired right away because, which was about the coldest night of the winter so far, and, uh, because they had the bar, so, anyway, um, we got washing equipment's come out, and they did it with a hydro vac, and I think it took them maybe an hour and a half, they were in and out, and done, probably took a month to get everything ready, I'm sure.
Right, right.
But I'm sure we'll begin an invoice for that.
So how, that's in the ground?
Yeah, this, this is the shut-off that was in the front of their house.
Okay, so was it on, was it on the interstate, or was it on?
Don't know, because the valve doesn't work. If it, if the valve worked, I could tell you which side it was on, but, and since I wasn't actually standing there, and you guys fixed it, so they just cut it out, put in a new valve, and it picks it up.
I'm just wondering myself, because this happened, same as my house, and it's on my ground, but it's my responsibility if it's on my side.
If I, if I, if I go to your house, and your valve works, and I shut it off, and the leak stops, it's yours, until it doesn't stop, it's ours, okay? And this is obviously a, it's a very old valve, it's been under the ground for a long time. And this is, one broke, it's just a piece of galvanized pipe.
Is this the one that was across from Sandy Adams on the corner, or no?
No, it was across the street from the Greens.
Oh, okay.
I don't, I don't know the people's name, I'm not sure, but.
Right, anything else?
Oh!
One other thing, um.
Just, I knew more, yeah.
I should be able to pick that up, pretty much immediately. I talked to him, and I believe he said you, you sent the paperwork.
Yeah, he's good to go.
So, um, fantastic, I just have to check from her, drop it off out there, and they can either bring it to us, or I can, when I'm out there, just take a trailer and bring it back, uh, whatever, it doesn't matter.
Is it from Galfo?
Correct, it's from Riggs, Mo, it's a, uh, SD twelve eleven, twenty-five quarters diesel, sixty inch cut, um, kind of a heavier duty model than what we currently have, so it'll look much larger than what we have. But, good machine, we've got the same one in Lowell, and it's, um, four years old now, and it's been a good machine, so. Great, I think I still do the, uh, grasshopper, which I probably would have preferred, was like fourteen hundred dollars more. Kubota currently has a, uh, a very good program with municipal prices, so that's why it's so much cheaper. Anyway.
Cool. Anything else? Alright, we're adjourned.